Next panel on animal fighting, but before I introduce the panel, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Patricia Smoot, who has joined us this afternoon. Commissioner Smoot is the Chair of the United States Parole Commission and is the ex-officio member of the Commission. Commissioner Smoot has served on the Parole Commission since 2010 and is Chairman since 2015. Welcome this afternoon.
Thank you.
So returning our attention to the guidelines relating to animal fighting. The Commission has received extensive public comment on this topic from members of Congress in the House and the Senate, from judges, as well as from individuals across the country, urging the Commission to undertake a review of the penalties for these offenses. To date, the Commission has already received over 36,000 pieces of public comment. I think it is the case that that is the most comment we've ever received on an amendment. So right now, you win our Guinness Book of World Records on public comment. This is an issue, obviously, of great importance to stakeholders. The proposed amendment would increase penalties for animal fighting, particularly those cases demonstrating extraordinary cruelty, and would also address the statutory amendments to the Animal Welfare Act, which was enacted after the original animal fighting guideline provisions were promulgated in 2008. The proposed amendment would also respond to new offenses relating to attending an animal fighting venture that were established by law. I look forward to hearing from all our witnesses. Let me begin by introducing them. The first witness represents the Department of Justice. Jeanne Williams was appointed Deputy Assistant Attorney General for the Environmental and Natural Resources Division of the U.S. Department of Justice in 2010. Before her current appointment, Ms. Williams served for 27 years in the Wildlife and Marine Resources Section as a trial attorney, as Assistant Chief, and later as Section Chief. Next is Chris Schindler, who is the Director of Animal Crimes for the Humane Society of the United States, and previously served as its Senior Manager of Animal Fighting Investigations. Prior to joining the Humane Society of the United States, Mr. Schindler was the Senior Humane Law Enforcement Officer and Field Advisor for the Washington, D.C. Humane Society. The final witness on the panel is Jennifer Chin, who is the Vice President for Legal Advocacy for the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. Ms. Chin has held that position since November 2013, and previously served as its Legal Advocacy Council. Now, just a few mechanics, in case you weren't here this morning. We have a light system that goes off, red light, when it's time to end the testimony. So I sort of give a gentle reminder, and then the hook. So, but we're very lively, Ben, so if you don't finish everything you want, I'm sure there'll be a shot at getting it in later on. The second thing is, we have people being livestreamed in, and while it's tempting because we're in this little cozy room talking one-on-one, we really have to keep our voices up so that people can hear it in the whole room, as well as livestreaming. So why don't we begin with you, Ms. Williams? Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I am the Deputy Assistant Attorney General of the Environment Division with oversight responsibility for our Environmental Crimes Section. Environmental crimes prosecutes both pollution and wildlife crimes. On the wildlife side, the section is responsible, along with United States attorneys around the country, for prosecuting illegal wildlife trafficking, Endangered Species Act violations, migratory bird crimes, and related matters. Because of their expertise in wildlife crimes, DOJ decided to consolidate the authorities for animal protection in this section. I'm appearing before you today to support guidelines revision for animal fighting prohibitions. As outlined in our comment letter, Congress has recognized the seriousness of these offenses, both in regard to the treatment of the animals involved, and in terms of the negative impact on society resulting from the violent, cruel nature of these crimes. We at DOJ believe that an increase in the base offense level from 10 to 16 for these offenses is appropriate in response to Congress's enhancement of the maximum term for animal fighting and the addition of two new animal fighting offenses. It is now unlawful to attend an animal fight or to cause a person under the age of 16 to attend an animal fight. This congressional action is in response to society's heightened awareness of the horrors of animal fighting and our recognition of the growing problem we face. And because we do believe that animal fighting activity is on the increase, we have taken steps at DOJ to enhance our enforcement program. Federal prosecutors around the country have begun to prioritize animal fighting crimes for prosecution. Over 250 defendants have been charged with animal fighting in the last seven years. In 2014, DOJ, through the leadership of then-associate Tony West, formed the Animal Cruelty Working Group. One of the recommendations of that group was to consolidate authority for the animal protection statutes within the Environmental Crimes Section. And as I mentioned, this recommendation was implemented by DOJ leadership through the 2014 revisions to the U.S. Attorneys Manual, which assigned these statutes to our Crime Section. Since then, we have worked with prosecutors and other investigating agencies to enhance enforcement. At our annual Environmental Crime Seminar at DOJ's National Advocacy Center, the session on prosecuting animal protection crimes was greeted with great interest by our prosecutor audience. We have engaged with federal investigating agencies to encourage referrals of cases. For example, we provided training on animal fighting crimes at USDA at Department of Agriculture's Professional Development Conference in Pittsburgh, presenting to over 100 employees and agents of the Inspector General's Office. We have worked with DOJ's Asset Forfeiture Section to make sure we fully utilize applicable forfeiture tools. And we are also looking at utilizing our state-federal relationships to work with state investigative partners. We plan to move this new program forward to increase the number and effectiveness of federal prosecutions. Consistent with this effort and congressional direction, we believe that an increase in the base offense level of animal fighting prohibitions to Level 16 is called for. With regard to the Commission's proposal and issues for comment as detailed in our letter, we believe the Commission should retain the extraordinary cruelty language in the application note as a basis for upward departure, but not include exceptional scale. Other than these matters, we are not aware of other aggravating and mitigating circumstances specific to animal fighting that warrant inclusion in the guideline. On extraordinary cruelty, we support the proposed revision of the application note because the level of cruelty exhibited in these cases is so fact-specific that we believe it is more meaningful to leave the extraordinary cruelty as an application note rather than assigning an enhancement number. We think this is best left to the discretion of the sentencing trial judge in consideration of the note. Regarding exceptional scale, we ask the Commission to address issues of scale by specifying that the animal fighting offenses, which are focused on individual animals or individual persons now, do not group for purposes of the multiple count rules in Section 3D. We believe that this approach, rather than a new enhancement or a new departure, will better address the measurable indicia of larger criminal operations. Allowing a sentencing judge to not group multiple counts involving the individual animals and individual offenses furthers the congressional purpose underlying these statutes, namely, protecting all animals from inhumane treatment. Thank you for your interest in this heinous crime and for your consideration of our comments on the proposed revision.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Humane Society of the United States, the nation's largest animal protection organization, I would like to thank the United States Census Commission for holding this public hearing on proposed amendments to federal sentencing guidelines and considering an amendment to the animal fighting guideline. The Commission's attention to this issue is welcomed by our organization, and I thank you for inviting me to speak to you all today on the importance of updating guidelines for this cruel activity. My name is Chris Schindler. I oversee the Humane Society of the United States' work on animal fighting. Over the course of my 18-year career, I've worked with law enforcement on thousands of dogfighting and cockfighting cases throughout the country, providing key intelligence, expert testimony, and critical investigative assistance. I've also worked on shutting down some of the country's most significant animal fighting operations, and I have unique knowledge on this criminal industry. For more than 50 years, the HSUS has worked with federal law enforcement on dogfighting and cockfighting cases. In 2013, for example, the HSUS was part of the federal crackdown on dogfighting that spanned across four states. More than 300 dogs were seized, and federal charges were brought against 15 individuals. HSUS has worked with federal and state law enforcement on hundreds of animal fighting cases across the country, including cases that involve major animal fighting operations. We are urging the Commission to include three specific characteristics for sentencing of animal fighting crimes. I'm going to talk about those three recommendations and give an example from my own experiences with animal cases as to why we believe the Commission should accept these characteristics. An enhancement of two points, when the offender intentionally and cruelly kills an animal or subjects the animal to severe animal abuse. The worst animal fighters commit acts of unimaginable cruelty, and the animals suffer every day of their lives. Over the many years of my work against animal fighting, we have recovered animals who have suffered immeasurable and unnecessary pain and suffering. I believe some photographs were shared with the Commission, just demonstrating some of the wounds and injuries.
Hold it up because the camera's concerned.
Sorry. Demonstrating some of the wounds and injuries that are sustained from some of the most egregious actors in animal fighting. And these are just a few instances of these types of injuries that are sustained in some A specific offense characteristic for particular egregious acts of cruelty is necessary because the cruelty of the fighting ring does not necessarily encompass the extent of suffering endured by animals using animal fighting ventures. The treatment before and after fights often constitutes the worst brutality. For example, dogfighters kill losing dogs in very cruel ways. If the losing dogs perceive it to be a particular embarrassment or affect the reputation or status of the owner, they're typically executed or tortured. We have known dogs to be doused with chemicals, hung, burned alive, and even beaten to death, as with the case we worked on last year where the dogs were brutally beaten with a sledgehammer for not performing. Dogs who are mauled in a fight may also be left and abandoned to die from their extensive injuries, which can oftentimes take hours or even days. Roosters using cockfighting are cast aside after a fight to large dead piles or barrels. While some cockfighters ensure the birds are deceased, others not take the time to ensure their suffering ends. On raids we have assisted on with our team, we found birds still alive with devastating wounds, punctured lungs, and even intestines wrapped around their legs while still fully conscious. Violent animal cruelty is inexcusable, and is important to allow for a two-point increase in cases of animal fighting that involve serious animal abuse. An enhancement of two points, when the offender demonstrates an exceptional degree of involvement in the business of animal fighting. Animal fighters who commit the most violent acts of cruelty deserve elevated sentences, especially who are actively involved in perpetrating crime, a criminal enterprise of animal fighting. Those who engage in breeding, organizing, sponsor, promoting, or animal fighting are most responsible for the proliferation of the crime, and they should be held accountable. They not only cause harm to the largest number of animals, they also encourage the high profits that draw from people in the bloodsport. Creating a specific offense category or characteristic for those who demonstrate an exceptional degree of involvement in the business of animal fighting would ensure higher sentences for the most responsible. For example, in June of 2009, we assisted USDA OIG in the raid of a significant dogfighting operation in Michigan. The defendants from this case were not only breeding a popular bloodline of fighting dogs, they were also hosting high-stakes fights and publishing internationally significant dogfighting publication. Despite their high-level involvement in enormously significant dogfighting operation, the defendants received six months in jail with two years of probation. In 2014, federal authorities raided one of the largest cockfighting operation pits in the country in Kentucky. That brought upwards of 400 attendees to fight throughout the cockfighting season, with hundreds of thousands dollars changing hands. The pit operator, his family, and others who were significantly involved received sentences ranging from six to 18 months. And I also provided some pictures of examples of what would be considered more organized than a typical operation. We have, you know, a cockfighting pit with bleacher seating. This particular location had concession stands, food that was offered, as well as a daycare area for children that was in the back at the time of the raid. Another pit that also arena seating. You know, these are the more significant operations that are causing the most amount of damage to animals in perpetrating crime. This is a dogfighting pit in Benton County, Mississippi, where there was actually seating on the second tier with several hundred people in attendance. Next, an enhancement of two points, when the offender possesses a dangerous weapon. There are experience in assisting federal law enforcement in animal fighting raids. Weapons are, can be present. Presence of knives and guns escalate the danger to law enforcement, to bystanders, especially when used in a criminal enterprise. Animal fighters who possess dangerous weapons are a greater threat to the community, and the sentencing guidelines should reflect that.
Just finish up. That's fine. Finish your thought.
So, in 2015, we assisted with a raid in South Carolina with more than 400 people in attendance. After the property was secured, dozens of firearms were found throughout the woods. In the Benton County case that I discussed and showed the picture, the defendants fired shots at officers upon making entry. The updated guidelines should account for this risk to law enforcement, bystanders, field staff, and those who are participating in the raids. We are pleased the Commission has proposed an increased baseline for animal fighting crimes, and we encourage you to adopt these three specific offense characteristics based on the examples I suggested today. Thank you for inviting me to speak and for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Schindler. Ms. Chin?
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Chin. I'm Vice President of the Legal Advocacy Department at the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the nation's oldest animal protection organization. Among our many programs, we provide a full menu of support to law enforcement and prosecutors in animal cruelty and animal fighting cases nationwide, including investigative, sheltering, legal, forensic, and veterinary services. Prior to joining the ASPCA in 2012, I served as an Assistant United States Attorney in the Appeals Division of the United States Attorney's Office for the District of New Jersey, where approximately 70 percent of my caseload involves sentencing matters. On behalf of the ASPCA and its 2.5 million supporters nationwide, I thank the Sentencing Commission for considering an amendment to the animal fighting guideline. We are pleased to provide you with our testimony today. We applaud the Commission for proposing to amend the guidelines to reflect recent statutory changes to the federal animal fighting statute, 7 U.S.C. Section 2156. We encourage the Commission to adopt the higher of the two proposed base offense levels, 10 rather than eight, for the new felony adopted by Congress in 2014 of bringing a child to an animal fight. We also support the Commission's proposal to raise the base offense level for the crime of animal fighting to 16 rather than 14, which achieves greater consistency with the increased statutory maximum enacted by Congress in 2008. However, that change alone falls short of Congress's intent to provide for longer sentences of up to 60 months to punish the most egregious animal fighting crimes and warrants the inclusion of specific offense characteristics. Specifically, we recommend that the guideline should include the following three specific offense characteristics. First, the guideline should provide an enhancement of two points, when an animal is intentionally killed by methods including, but not limited to, shooting, hanging, electrocution, or drowning, or when an animal suffers due to lack of veterinary care for an injury sustained during fighting or from neglect. All animal fighting is cruel and violent, but some practices are even more so, and those demand longer sentences. The cruelty of animal fighting is not confined solely to the fighting pit. Fighters may escalate the level of cruelty by withholding food and shelter, or by failing to seek professional medical attention for wounds. Animals who no longer have value to their owners may be executed by horrific methods. A specific offense characteristic should provide for longer sentences in these instances. And I believe you have a handful of photographs as well. The first three are from a case, a multi-state federal dogfighting case that was prosecuted out of the Middle District of Alabama. And you can see from these photos some of the conditions that the dogs were in. These are emaciated dogs that were without food or water. The third photo is of a dog that's tethered with two tires attached, so that dog is forced to bear the weight of those tires if it chooses to move around, and that's to serve the purpose of training that animal for fighting. This photo shows a bit of the scale of the operation of one of the sites in which a search warrant was executed. This is a young puppy that we refer to as Timmy, and you can see that Timmy is a very young puppy with an incredibly heavy and large chain around his neck to which he's tethered. And the last photo is a close-up of a dog that illustrates some of the injuries, wounds, that these animals can sustain. Secondly, the guideline should provide an enhancement of two points, when there is a pattern of activity showing that the defendant has had a substantial amount of involvement in the business of animal fighting, as indicated by breeding animals, selling animals, or organizing, sponsoring, or promoting animal fights. Animal fighters who perpetuate this criminal enterprise through these activities harm large numbers of animals and make the bloodsport more profitable. A specific offense characteristic for those who demonstrate a substantial degree of involvement in animal fighting ventures would ensure longer sentences for those who profit and allow others to profit from inflicting large-scale harm. Activities that constitute organizing, sponsoring, and promoting animal fighting include financing the cost of the fighting animals and training, securing and financing the venue, putting up money for wagers, obtaining security, and soliciting participants and spectators. Activities that indicate involvement in the business of breeding and selling include profiting from stud fees for the sale of puppies, breeding dogs, or birds from fighting bloodlines. Lastly, the guideline should provide an enhancement of two points, when a dangerous weapon is present. Animal fighting is commonly linked to other felonies, including drug and human trafficking, child abuse, domestic violence, and money laundering. Often, animal fighting operations are discovered while law enforcement is investigating these other crimes. The presence of firearms escalates the level of danger to the communities in which these crimes are perpetrated, to law enforcement responding to these offenses, and to the public and private animal welfare organizations that are often called upon to assist law enforcement with animal fighting investigations and seizures. The heightened danger presented by possession of weapons is not currently being captured by other criminal charges because offenders are rarely charged for illegal possession of weapons at animal fights unless the offender has a prior felony conviction, nor is animal fighting generally treated as a crime of violence or a drug trafficking crime that would warrant a firearm charge. In many cases, sentencing likely has not accounted for the increased danger posed by weapons. Thank you very much for your attention to this important matter and for the opportunity to present our testimony.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to, first of all, thank everybody here and just say that you give a voice to the animals, that they can't speak. So, it's really, I'm grateful. I know the whole Commission is grateful for your coming here today. I wanted to ask about the weapons, because is it, the Justice Department's view that in the event of perpetrator violating the animal fighting laws, that that perpetrator has to have a weapon on him or herself, or that at the, in the arena, or spectators would have a weapon? Are they charged, is it your idea for the enhancement if, in fact, somebody at the arena has weapons, or that the perpetrator, him or herself, has to have a weapon?
Well, Your Honor, we didn't affirmatively advocate for an enhancement for a weapon. Our letter simply stated that if the Commission was interested in putting in an enhancement for guns, that we would, you know, we would support that. When we looked at what aggravating, mitigating circumstances might be important here, we were looking at things specific to animal fighting. I, you know, I guess I'd have to say we were more focused on the actual perpetrators, but it is an offense to attend, and so I think if there was a gun present, the concern here is the safety of officers. So I think it would be both, but that wasn't our...
Well, my concern is this, is that in light of court decisions, in light of the Second Amendment, a lot of people, not my choice, but other people, will be carrying weapons. They carry weapons. I don't know whether there's a higher incidence of carrying weapons with people who attend these events or not, but I wanted to make sure that if we did put some enhancement, it would punish those people who are carrying on the other illegal activities, and then increase the danger of that activity by virtue of the fact that that person has a weapon. Maybe that's a view you all share, or maybe it's not, I don't know.
I mean, I think that would be right, that there should be some nexus between the possession of the weapon and the offense.
Doesn't there have to be? I mean, as per purposes of the Second Amendment, if someone has a right to carry a firearm, I don't see how we could possibly enhance on that basis.
Can you...
Judge, pardon? We start there, and then, did you? All right, and then...
So, the whole reason we proposed the amendment is we had complaints, among them, Chief Judge Watkins from the Middle District of Alabama, in the case that you referenced earlier about this guideline being inadequate. And there's certainly a concern on our part that it might not be severe enough in a lot of cases. On the other hand, we've had history with guidelines that have a lot of special offense characteristics that really do not distinguish the worst offenders from other offenders. They, in fact, are just special offense characteristics that are going to apply in basically all of the cases because they're all perpetrated that way. That's the experience with a lot of the enhancements for the child pornography guideline. We wouldn't want this guideline to be like that. We would want it to be severe enough to reflect the punishment that is deserved in a lot of cases. So my concern about your request for new special offense characteristics is, are these not going to be cases that are typical, as opposed to truly exceptional?
Right, and, you know, Chris may be able to speak also to, you know, his firsthand experience deploying on these cases with law enforcement, but I think in thinking about crafting these proposed special offense characteristics, the idea was that there are this sort of ordinary cases, right? And these particular factors that we've tried to delineate with some specificity are the ones that actually are, take that crime away from that ordinary case and, in fact, make them far more harmful.
How do we know that? How do we know that that really, though, is not the ordinary case? You know, at some point, use of a computer becomes a special offense characteristic with child pornography, and that's how it's perpetrated, right? Was with the use of a computer. How do we know that the ones that you've carved out really are distinguishing some that are not going to be most of the cases that a federal judge will say? How do we know that?
If I could speak for a moment on that issue, so we participate, I mean, you know, I've been overseeing our animal fighting division, and I've worked in this field for 18 years and participated in a lot of investigations and raids on these crimes. Not every case, you know, the electrocution and drowning, I mean, that is a very unique subset of individuals, and unfortunately, we do come across it, but it's not on every case. That's not necessarily the standard. Certainly, we feel when somebody takes it upon themselves to not only commit the act of animal fighting, which we agree, you know, that's the standard, you know, the dogs get injured, those animals are obviously maimed during that, but that's, you know, the typical. Somebody who then takes it a step further because they're embarrassed by their dog's lack of winning, and then electrocutes the dog in front of a crowd, is a different subset of individual, and that's not something that, you know, we hear about in every fight or anything like that. Those are very specific.
What about weapons? I mean, aren't the large-scale animal fighting ventures going to be ones that, you know, the sponsors have weapons? Are they all going to do that?
It depends on the location. Some of the large cockfighting pits actually prohibit weapons, and some of the more significant cockfighting pits actually do not allow weapons to come into the facility. So the individuals who bring guns to those events, you know, they're prohibited by their own, you know, counterparts in cockfighting, but they may bring weapons, you know. There was a couple of individuals that were shot and killed at a cockfight in Texas a few years ago because somebody went out to their car, got their gun, and came back and killed two individuals over a fight that happened there. And so those are the type of people, if nobody else has weapons, and this... those are the type of people. There's nobody else has weapons, and this individual went out to his vehicle and came and killed two individuals.
Well, but there are other ways to address that, aren't there?
Well, obviously, there was murder, but I mean, I guess I'm saying that's not a standard.
The thing that I find curious about that is, if I were a sponsor of one of these kinds of events, trying to put myself in that framework, I'd be concerned about individuals. And, I mean, I've lived in Louisiana and Alabama, okay? And I would be concerned that individual customers might want, might get angry, and might go to their car, truck, and retrieve a weapon, right? I would think that all the sponsors would have weapons.
Yeah, and that's very likely. You know, we do come across guns. I mean, there's been some fights in progress for dog fighting that we haven't found guns. But then there's others like South Carolina and some of these other ones where there was an exorbitant amount of guns.
Herpes, right, right. That would be the typical.
And some, you know, I would say what's not typical is some of the pits that we've had informants in. You know, normally guns are concealed. A lot of times, people aren't having guns out, but there's been several locations where there's actually people with AKs and other weapons providing, you know, basically standing at the pit side, which is a little bit more unusual for somebody to, for them to actually be presenting a gun saying, "We're going to do something if something occurs here."
Do you know if those are open carry states? Do you know where that's occurred?
I don't know. Is Georgia an open carry? Georgia, Alabama. I'm not sure if those are open carry states or not.
Yeah, you have to have a permit to carry concealed, not to carry open in Alabama.
Can I ask a quick question about the grouping rule?
Well, I was just going to just, I've got a whole line of people. I'll get you, I'll get you. Just everyone's interested in this topic. We'll go to, do you want to?
Ms. Williams, I too wanted to explore the grouping rule argument you're making. I get, I understand a little better the argument you're making with respect to individual animals being harmed and treating them and the same way we might treat individual assaults of different people. The more difficult argument for me is that we would treat individual children at the same event as not being grouped. When, I'm just thinking of an alien smuggling case, when you have multiple victims, multiple aliens being brought in, those group. In other situations, if there's drug dealing and minors are present, I don't think we individually calculate the individual minor. So I'm just interested in you exploring that more. To what extent would this approach be consistent or inconsistent with the way we've handled grouping in other parts of the guidelines?
And I guess I'd have to say, not being completely familiar with those statutes underlying the crimes, the other crimes you're referring to, our view was just that this was a reflection of this new crime that Congress has, you know, created to make it a crime to bring a child and to...
But it's a crime to bring an alien, right. So it's a new crime, but I'm just wondering whether the focus of the statute is on the animals or the children? Does that play a, does that, should that be a factor in the commission's decision?
I think the, clearly, the focus of these statutes are on the individual animals. But I do think part of why, for instance, you've had so many comments here, is that there's just a really swelling societal awareness of how awful and violent and heinous these crimes are. And to bring a child to something like that and expose that child to that violence, I understand that groups of children would be coming in and smuggled, but this is really focused on the exposure to the child. And in terms of, you know, in terms of scale and size, and how many people attend, and how many are children, that was our, that was our thought in suggesting the approach that we suggested to multiple counts.
And you're saying that, though, with respect to the individual animals as well, right?
Yes.
So if you had, I don't know how, what the average number of, at a cockfight, what the average number would be, but you'd say each of those is a separate?
And it just really varies. I mean, a cockfight is between two roosts or two birds. And it may be one event with just that happening that evening. It may be 10 in a row, but in our view...
Could you group each bird separately of the one fight?
You could. You could.
And what would that mean? Plus two, plus two?
Well, if you had an enhancement, our view was not to do...
No, no, no. I mean, with the grouping rules. So when they don't group...
Oh, on the levels.
In terms of the, it's been a while since I've done this, but you've got the total offense level, and if they don't group, then you're going to, in effect, add units, which often is a plus two.
You know, and of course, the rules are somewhat complex, but that's what I think that would be.
Very complex. But you all have done this, you've run this in your stereotypical case, and you've done the calculation with these rules and think that in cases involving large number of animals and children, the sentence wouldn't get too severe?
I don't think so. But, you know, I think in some ways, we are also at DOJ grappling with what is really a new initiative on our part to pursue animal fighting crimes. I mean, that's, that was the whole reason that the authorities were moved to our environmental crimes section because they were somewhat consistent with our work on wildlife. And certainly, we've dealt with the grouping issues in the wildlife crimes where, who you, what you charge in each crime and et cetera. And I think so much goes into what's in an indictment and how the charges are made that, at the end of the day, it might well be that you wouldn't break them up one by one, but we just felt that for something like scale where you could measure it, and with the focus on the new provisions of exposing a child to these provisions, that it would apply, that if we did have some exception to the grouping, that it should apply to any of the individual crimes.
And you think a departure wouldn't address that sufficiently?
I think if we, if the commission believes that it does not want to proceed with, you know, specifying that the scale would be addressed by not grouping, then our preferred alternative would be the upward departure for exceptional scale.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
No, I'm still sitting here grappling with that gun.
Did you have your chance?
No, I mean, I think you covered it. I guess would you want, I mean, the concern I have is similar to Commissioner Friedrich's, which is in other contexts where we have multiple victims, we don't dispense with the grouping rules. Number of victims in a fraud case. I mean, there's lots of other places where people are affected, but there's still a sense that if you treated each one specifically separately, very quickly, things would add up. And I just wanted to get a sense of whether or not you thought through kind of, whether that would actually produce a punishment that seems about right, given the level of activity, or if it would go far beyond even what the stat max is in some of these cases. That would be my only concern.
No, my question was going from the typical case to the typical defendant, and I wanted to hear from both Ms. Williams and from all of you really, as to what your average defendant, typical defendant looks like? Is it somebody that generally has a criminal background, or is it somebody that's sort of a first offender? And is there some overlap between these activities and other kinds of criminal activities? If you could just talk about that for a minute?
So for like a typical offender, you know, unfortunately, this crime is, there's somebody in every state. You know, this is a very widespread crime, especially organized dog fighting. But not, not every offender is going to be at the highest level of organization of dog fighting. And so there are different tiers. There are individuals who may just be breeding dogs, right? And they're breeding and they're selling dogs to other individuals for fighting. They may not be involved to any higher extent than that. You know, that would be kind of a more common offender. Or they may match dogs, or, sorry, fight dogs, you know, every once in a while just to keep their bloodline going because they need to show and demonstrate their dogs have been fought. You know, there's also individuals that are just the participants. You know, they may bring a dog to a fight, you know, every once in a while to that pit. You know, these are like the common guys. But then you have the ones that are at the highest level that are, you know, what they call hooking matches. These are the guys who I would call him and say, "I have a 32-pound female." And then he would, you know, connect with other people who have those dogs, and he would facilitate setting that match up. And without that person, I mean, that's a higher-level individual that is very unique. There's not, you know, it's not like there's droves of these guys that are out there that hook matches. And it makes it possible for that to occur. You also have the people who are hosting these fights that don't always have to be a dogfighter. Some of the individuals that are providing a space to host a fight are not actually fighting. Actually, in that, you know, we also participated in the case from the Middle District of Alabama. One of the defendants was a restaurant and bar owner who was not a dogfighter, but when it rained, they moved from Donnie Anderson's property, who was the primary defendant, to his bar so that they could fight indoors. And, you know, without him being involved in that operation, they would not have a space to fight the dogs. And so obviously, those are, you know, what I would consider the people who are more of the facilitators that are not, you know, there's thousands of people involved in animal fighting. There's not thousands of people who are providing and hosting the space that are making it possible to set the matches up or the fights. Same goes for cockfighting. And even for cockfighting, there's people who are illegally distributing knives and gaffes. You know, that's not, there's not somebody in every state who sells those. Without those little knives they strap onto the bird's feet, they, you wouldn't be able to fight birds. And so in one case that we did, we, it was a distributor who was the U.S. representative for a Mexican company, a company from Mexico, who was basically importing illegally these knives and gaffes in Pringles containers and selling them, distributing them through the United States. We see several thousand knives from his house, and that would be another person that would, you know, he's not the guy that we raid who has his little box, right, of knives. This is the individual who actually fuels the industry. And so, I mean, I don't know if that answers how we separate them.
So there's a huge range, is what you're telling me? There's not a typical...
There is.
And which ones, Ms. Williams, so which ones do we generally take?
Well, I think you see exactly the kind of different, you know, the different levels of involvement that Chris was talking about. But sometimes, we do refer to this crime as the sport of criminals because it is often connected to folks who are very involved in gambling, are very involved in the drug trade, very involved in the gun trade. And certainly, part of our initiative at Justice is to really reach as much as possible those kinds of offenders who are multiple offenders.
If I could just ask one question. I think this is what concerns me about the whole weapon offense. So you talked about a whole array of different types of folks who would be involved in this kind of activity. And when you're talking about the enhancement of two points, who are you directing it toward? And I think that goes to some of the conversations we talked about before, that there are people who are able to carry weapons because it's their right. Who are you targeting this, the two points? Who would you be looking to charge that additional two points for?
I mean, I think it would be those participants who are, who have those weapons in order to further the animal, the animal fighting enterprise.
Not to protect those involved, or is it the people who are using the weapons to do something to the animals, which would be the nexus, or protecting the enterprise? That would also be the nexus?
I think it might be a bit broader, as you just articulated.
Let me ask you. I don't, many of your really compelling examples involve dogs. You know, there's nothing, I don't know as much about cockfighting. We don't do a lot of it in Boston, so I just would like to understand it better. Because we're potentially tripling this penalty. I mean, that's, if you go from a 10 to a 16, you could potentially go from a 6 to 12 to 21 to 27. So, so I'm trying to understand, who's the typical cockfighter? I hate the horrible stories about the dogs and the pictures, but who's involved in that? And is it the same level of culpability as the people who do the dogs?
So cockfighting is actually, you know, one of those industries that I, there are probably more people involved in cockfighting nationally than in any other illegal activity with animals. You know, some of these large-scale pits draw 400 to 500 people in a weekend that are coming from all over the country. And so when you, like a cockfighting pit basically operates with, you know, with a dogfight, there may be only two matches or three, you know, two or three or four fights in a night. For a cockfight, which they call a derby, you know, it depends on how many entries. And so they have a schedule that literally they put out. I mean, these individuals do not feel that it's illegal. They feel that even with the federal penalties, they actually print a schedule that they send out to all of these people that they carry in their wallet that tells you how much the entry fee is, whether it's knife, you know, which is, you know, the little curve that looks like a knife, or a gaff which looks like an ice pick, which type of instrument they're using. You know, so it kind of specifies all of these things, which is good.
And are they typically use those knives and gaffs, or is it more typical just the two birds going at each other?
They strap them on their legs, and so typically both birds die because the extent of the injuries. And it depends on the weapon. Like a gaff is like an ice pick. And so if you think about how thin an ice pick is, it takes much longer time for the birds to die. The injuries, while they're significant, they're, you know, it's more punctured lungs, things like that. A knife or a knife is, they have short knife and long knife. Short knife is just a short knife, about that long, but they're razor-sharp. There have actually been cockfighters who have been killed in the pit by their own birds. And then long knife is about three inches long. And so for those fights, you know, if you raid a decent-sized pit where there's several hundred people there, there could be more than 100 birds there for that night. I mean, we've seen several hundred. And while it doesn't look like there could be that many, the fights go on, basically all, sometimes they start at 10:00 a.m. and go all the way through the night. And so the individuals that are involved range also. They run the gamut of all the different people.
So that day, there would be like 200, you say they all die? So over the course of that day, 200 dead?
I didn't want to bring truly disturbing photos today, so I wanted to spare everyone, but the...
What, do you think these?
I tried. I mean, not that those aren't, but I tried to, you know, be aware. And so normally, a lot of these places, like a pit we did in South Carolina, you can almost go by smell to be able to find where their dead pit is. And so they'll either dig a big pit where they'll throw birds in.
So you would put the level of culpability for dogs and cockfighting as equivalent?
I would, yes.
And Ms. Williams, you would not group those, though? So there could be, that'd be like 100 plus twos?
I think we're having, yeah, technically, yes. We would, we would, our view is that on any of these crimes, it would be the better approach to not group. But again, you're, you know, there's so many things that go into how a prosecutor is going to cast an indictment to be reasonable. I don't know that you'd see an indictment of 100 counts involving two birds each.
The end effect in that scenario would be to add plus five to the offense level, right? I mean, you max out at plus five. So you'd increase from a 16...
To a 21.
To a 21.
Plus five.
Yeah.
Plus five.
Thanks.
Is that right? So you're talking about, you're talking about a maximum base offense level of 21?
But you're not, what my colleague, Mr. Eddy, was just mentioning to me is mostly you'll have one owner with two or three birds. So it would be a very unusual situation in one of these environments. You're running owners through. It's not one owner of all 100 birds.
But that's like, I mean, you wouldn't charge some sort of conspiracy and they're accountable for all these animals?
What about the person who's running it?
Yeah.
I mean, the person who's running it, resting from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, has 100 fights.
But, but under that scenario, let's say they're accountable for all, it adds plus five. You max out under the grouping rules, I think. So I'm just asking, do you think in those egregious cases, is what you're seeking a level 21? Is that what you think, which is pre-acceptance 37 to 46? Is that what you all think is the appropriate sentence in the mine-run case involving a lot of animals?
Well, I'm counting from 16. I'm hoping I'm counting from 16. And some of the scenarios we were looking at when we were devising our comments to you, we were getting to 21 or 22 for the, for the offense level. Again, you know, we think that if this seems like not an appropriate approach, that an upward departure would give you that flexibility with the sentencing judge.
One last quick question.
One last one. We have another big panel. The states on this? I mean, so, you know, I guess it's a federal offense because of the gambling and the interstate, but in terms of the animal cruelty part of this, where are the states on this? Do these cases ever get, I mean, is this federal because of the scope of the gambling operation? Does it become federal because of this level of cruelty? And do you seek to get relief in state prosecutions for these sorts of things?
I think both of our organizations work both with, you know, with federal law enforcement as well as state. I mean, there are many, 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 many state cases. We assist with both on the blood sports cases and with the, obviously, the cruelty cases.
So the federal nexus is the gambling? Is that how they get the...
Well, it's a commercial.
Commercial, it has to be commercial.
I would say the scale. You know, when we, we do a lot of intelligence gathering, we work with a lot of different federal agencies and state agencies. And, you know, for us, when we reach out to any of our federal contacts about a case, it would really be the size and scope, you know, and the level involved in the individuals. You know, when we're talking about like a huge cockfighting pit, that's not what they're all like. Those are, I was just giving examples of the, you know, the most egregious ones. A lot of cockfighting pits can be much smaller. Those cases tend to be prosecuted at a state level. But when you're talking about, you know, places like the pit in Kentucky that was raided, I mean, that was literally people were coming from all over the country to go to that location.
So does that mean, though, that, I guess, it goes back to Judge Pryor's question, which is, I'm just wondering if the...
is, I'm just wondering if the typical federal case is actually one of fairly large scope as a matter of what cases are likely to come into the, are they like, is the typical one for us likely to be a bigger?
I think it depends on...
I think that's generally fair. Certainly, it's the kind of investigation we're looking at now with our, with our initiative and our enhanced authorities.
Well, thank you very much. As I say, you've got enormous interest in this across the country, and we're taking it really seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.